We'll begin this meeting with real call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Okay, item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three is our community invocation, but I do not see Pastor Moore in attendance. So we'll go ahead and move on to item number four.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Having the motion seconded to adopt the agenda, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All nays?
No nays.
No nays, the ayes have it. Motion is adopted. Are there any announcements? Okay, hearing now. We'll move on to item number six, public forum. Did anyone sign up under public forum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No additional people have signed up under the public forum with the exception of gentleman here for item 7A.
Okay. Then with that, we will move to item 7A, community item presentations, investor-owned rental subdivisions. If you wouldn't mind coming forward and stating your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Stephen Hunt. I live at 5031 West Ravens Cross Street, Meridian, Idaho 83646. And I'd like to thank the city council in advance here for taking a few minutes and looking at the situation about investor-owned rental subdivisions. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of Turnberry Crossing, Autumn Fair, and Ashford Green subdivisions. All of these subdivisions have HOAs. They're all filed with the county, and they all went through a procedure that almost all subdivisions in Meridian have gone through. And that procedure involves the filing of CCNRs with Ada County Recorder's Office. The one that you see on your screen right now is the one that was filed for Turnberry Crossing subdivision back in 1998. The subdivisions that are now coming into being, which are investor-owned, sometimes do not and probably will not have a homeowners association. So if they don't have to file anything with the county stating what they expect their tenants or what they expect or how they expect to maintain their properties, how can all of the surrounding subdivisions feel comfortable knowing that there's going to be 70 homes in Burlingame subdivision, they're all going to be rentals, and basically, there are no procedures other than the standard city code? So, I did a little research on the advice of Bill over here, and he said, you know, they have to follow all the city codes. Here's what happens when a renter moves in, and I can speak from experience because we have a American Homes for Rent house in Turnberry Crossing subdivision where the renters move in, American Homes for Rent does not give them a copy of the CCNRs, which they are required to do, which we have asked them to do. And they move in and they find out they can't park their boat out in front of their house. So they're very upset, and they've just signed a year's lease. It makes for a very, very, very difficult situation. And nine times out of 10, the tenant will abandon the house ASAP, or they'll figure out a way to get their boat in the garage or whatever it is, their trailer, whatever. So you can see where the difficulty comes in. I was really enthused when I went and looked at the city code and found that most of the general problems that you have with renters that move into a subdivision that has HOAs or even one that doesn't, they can always claim ignorance and say, "No one ever told me this. They never told me there was a homeowners association. They never told me you had CCNRs." And frankly, they don't know anything about city codes either. So when they get into trouble, the first thing they do is claim ignorance. Then you have to go get ahold of whoever the investor is of the subdivision. He may or may not live in Idaho, as is the case here with Burlingame. They live in California. So who do you contact? Who do you contact when there's a problem like that? It could be a problem that is noticed by someone driving through the subdivision that happens to live in the subdivision next door. It could be another renter right in the same subdivision. How does the city council know that American Homes for Rent has supplied these people that are moving into this subdivision? How can I say this? The information they need. Our goal here is to maintain property values and calm surrounding homeowners and homeowners associations' concerns about 70 homes in Burlingame rental subdivisions. So I've come tonight with a few suggestions, and they aren't real tough. If you look at the Meridian Police Department Code Enforcement areas, 728 is the area where Burlingame subdivision resides. The three subdivisions that I pointed out to you are surrounding in 729 and 719. So they completely surround this subdivision. They were all required to file the document that I showed you with the Ada County. My question to the council is, is American Homes for Rent filing anything with the county stating that they have some kind of understanding or they're going to have some kind of guidelines for these people that live in there, all these rental homes? I don't know, and neither does anybody else. So if they don't have to file anything, and all they're going to do is follow the city code, which is really, it covers just about everything. All of the items that I pointed out, and I'm looking for my page here. Oh, here we go. If you look on the page in front of you now, and you go down to the six or seven items, first of all, are fences allowed in front yards? When a person moves into our subdivision, they know that there's no fences allowed in the front yard. You can't tie your dog up out there. You can't do anything, right? Except, you're expected to keep it, and we have guidelines. So where are the guidelines? Okay, the guidelines are the regular city code that says you can't have any weeds over eight inches high. You've got to maintain your grass, et cetera, et cetera. What would it hurt to have a meeting with the developer or owner and ask them to give every tenant a copy of the city code? And let the tenants know when they move in, here's the city code, here's what you're expected to do, and here's what you can and cannot do in these houses. And if you look, you'll find that even subdivisions that don't have an HOA, they still file a document with Ada County, and it says in there, "We're going to maintain our homes to this standard. There's no fences in the front yard," or whatever those guidelines are. These people that are moving in here need to have some guidelines. They need to have them, and they need to have them in writing. Not only do I feel that way, the surrounding subdivisions that I'm here tonight representing, they feel that way too. So just envision this, if you would. You sit down and have a meeting with them, and you ask them, "We would like you to give all of your new tenants copies of these particular codes," and I have itemized them here, "Chapter 2, 4-2-1 through 4-2-5, along with parking." Parking is another thing that we have found with rentals in our subdivision. For some reason, people just think they can park any which way they want to park on the street. Even if it's in a subdivision, the city code still applies. Am I correct? So you can't park facing the wrong direction on a two-way street. You can't do that. So, what do you do? Somebody has to file a complaint, right? Then code enforcement gets involved, and it goes right down the whole path. Why not get with this developer or this owner of this property and say, "We want a local phone number, not just for anybody, for your tenants to be able to call if they have a question, if something's broken. Who's going to fix it?" We've run into this time and time again, not only with American Homes for Rent, but with other rentals in our subdivisions. Out of the three subdivisions that I told you about, one of them has over 50 rentals. They have multiple property management companies, multiple owners, everything. Getting ahold of a person out of state and getting something fixed in those homes can be very lengthy process. So this could all be avoided right now, especially in this subdivision that's surrounded by homeowners associations, and there's a lot of people, you know, they're basically wringing their hands. So if the city council's willing to do that, or at least consider it, all kinds of things can happen. We did something as simple as this. We have a lot of creative people on our homeowners association. It says, "Welcome to the subdivision." Tells you when the trash is collected, and it tells you basic things that are going on in the subdivision. When these renters move into our homes in our subdivision, they have no idea what's going on. And it's not just because we have a homeowners association. They just don't know. So why not work something out with this guy, because they have several other subdivisions going on in Meridian and in Starr and in Caldwell? Why don't we, in Meridian, set an example, lead by example here? Work out an agreement with this owner and developer, have him sit down with the tenants, give them some guidelines to go by, and you're going to save a lot of grief down the road, a lot of grief. And I just can't, I can't express enough the situations that we've dealt with. As simple as our subdivision, which where we only have five rentals, and two of them are American Homes for Rent. And we have had multiple issues with multiple owners of these rental homes. So my question to you guys is, are you open to doing something like this, or has, what can we do?
Thank you for your presentation. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I do have a comment, and I invite legal counsel to correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that any development that comes before us, whether it's going to be used for rentals or for owner occupancy, if there are common areas in that development, they are required to create homeowners association to maintain those common areas, and therefore they typically create CCNRs. And CCNRs are the legal documents that are regulating the things that you're bringing before us, with the exception of what we oversee in city code. So any of the American Homes for Rent communities that are coming before us that are existing solely for the purpose of renting all of the homes in that community are going to be required to, if they have common areas that they are maintaining, they're going to at least be at minimum required to file CCNRs to address the maintenance of those. So is that, is my understanding correct?
You're correct.
Okay. So I'd like to let you know that.
And that gets us partway there. That gets us partway there. So what can we do, or is it possible, or maybe you guys can brainstorm something? Here are the other things that don't fall under city code. Garbage cans in front of houses. Doesn't say anything anywhere about city, except if you have a garbage can full of garbage, right, sitting out there for days? But are we going to have a subdivision that is surrounded by other subdivisions where everyone's required to put their garbage can away within 48 hours after the trash is picked up? Or they get a letter and they get fined by the HOA? Are we going to have a subdivision of 70 homes where they can just leave their garbage cans out all the time? So that would be something that the owner, we could talk to the owner about. All he has to do is say, "When they move in, you must pick up your garbage cans." It says like right here, it says, "You can put your cans out the night before, but please put them away on Friday after they've been emptied." And you've got to ask, you can ask them nicely, they don't do it, then the owner or the phone number, the phone number, the homeowners association surrounding this subdivision, our phone number is filed with Ada County. We should have a local phone number where if there's problems in that subdivision, we can call that phone number and say, "Hey, this is what's going on in your subdivision. You need to do something about it." That's what people do to us, and call us on a regular basis if there's something wrong.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Thank you. I think it would help me if you could try to explain a little more where you're coming from. Is your concern mainly individual rental properties with this company that might fall under your HOA, or is your concern the investor-owned rental subdivisions? And the reason I'm asking, if you'll give me a second, the reason I'm asking that is, it occurs to me that if an investor had a whole neighborhood that they were trying to maintain, at least some of the development folks I've met with have said that they have very strong standards because they're trying to protect their investment, right?
Right.
So they're trying to say, "Hey, you can only fly the American flag. You got to, they have a program to have the lawnmower, et cetera." And so I'm trying to understand, if your concern is sort of like enforcement of your HOA's regulations with individual rentals through a big company, or is your concern more these large investor-owned subdivisions?
My concern is a large investor-owned subdivision, and frankly, because it's right next door to us. It's right next door to our subdivision. If that subdivision goes to pot, for whatever reason, then what happens to our property values? And the property values across Black Cat, Ashford Greens, they're just as concerned as we are. And so I agree with what you're saying, but what I'd like to see, and you don't know it until they want to build the first house, because according to what I've been told by planning, what happens is, before the permit is given to build the very first house in the subdivision, there has to be certain documents filed with Ada County. Those documents are the ones you're referring to and the ones you're referring to regarding the common areas. So once those documents are filed, then they'll give the permit to build the first house. But if that first house renter doesn't know that he's expected to, you know, have some kind of guidelines, or at least get a copy of the city code that tells him what he has to do per the city code, somebody needs to give that renter that information. In our case, we go over to people's houses and we hand them a letter, like the one you see in front of you now, and we say, and they go, 99% of the time, they say, "I never even knew there was an HOA here." This is, Burlingame doesn't have an HOA, but they do have documents, and they are going to be required to follow the city code. If that's the case, let's get them to give all their tenants a copy of the city code saying, "This is what you can and can't do." And the added ones that they want to have in there. I know if I was the investor, you know, I would want to have standards. I wouldn't have to have an HOA. I'd say, "You're going to live in this subdivision. Here's the rules." That's it. And you're a renter. You don't even own the house. I own the house. So that's what I would do, and I totally agree with you. But we can help, we can help avoid what I can guarantee you will be a huge headache because if people think they can get away with it, they will. You know that. They won't take care of it if they're not informed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland. Sorry, is that Councilman Cavanagh?
Yeah, it's Cavanagh.
Okay.
I don't know who was, it doesn't matter.
Go ahead. I'll go next, with the mayor's permission.
Mr. Hunt, your suggestion about providing city code to homeowners is intriguing. Is that something that you would suggest that city staff are doing, or that's a role that would fall onto the homeowners association?
The people that are maintaining the common areas in this subdivision, those people that have their name on that line, I would believe would be in their best interest to do that. But they probably will not do it unless they get suggested, it's suggested by the city or by planning or by somebody that says, "You should do this because you may have these kind of problems." And the eyes and ears, in a homeowners association, everybody's the eyes and ears of the subdivision. We watch out. We watch out for everybody, and believe me, we'll be watching this subdivision. We'll be watching it. We can help this guy out, but we can't help him if his tenants are not informed.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Cavanagh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate your insight, and it's, as I mentioned, it's an intriguing idea. I'll share with you, at least for your own benefit, my philosophy, and that is, I prefer the lightest hand of government, and I think a lot of people in our community too. Someone who's grown up in Meridian in a homeowners association-driven neighborhood and one without, I can tell you that the home that we sold in our non-HOA was worth a lot more than the one that didn't have one. That said, I've also worked in a professional capacity with homeowners associations where residents collectively decide to dissolve, and I support that as well. And I think that part of homeownership, you're guaranteed certain rights, and to me, supporting that little hand of government as possible, I think, kind of follows that. If an HOA wants to increase their value, their level, their requirements, great, they're able to do so. I do get somewhat concerned when we start asking then the city to follow along if there's not a life safety benefit to our citizens. So to me, it's trying to identify what the value comes to our community as a whole in terms of life safety by implementing some of the suggestions, as opposed to allowing the free market to say, "This is what makes our neighborhood great." You are expected to have your trash can gone by a certain time. You are expected to adhere to architectural standards and colors because that's what encompasses the value of our community.
And please don't mistake me. I'm not saying that they should have a homeowners association at all. All I'm saying is, they need to inform the tenants when they move in, based on my personal experience and the experience of these other homeowners associations. It doesn't matter if the subdivision has a homeowners association or not. If the guy that owns the house lives in California, and the house, and the pipes break in the house, and the place is not rented, then you've got a big fat mess on your hands, and he's got to get on an airplane and fly here.
Right. You're absolutely right.
If the Ada County or the city doesn't have some kind of a local number, emergency number, to deal with situations like that in this subdivision, or the surrounding homeowners, the surrounding homeowners are to the point where they'll help. They'll help. They'll call in. If they see something going wrong, they'll call them and say, "Hey, you've got something going wrong over there. What's the matter with that?" That's what people do. That's what neighbors are for, with or without a homeowners association.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Nary.
Maybe to help Mr. Hunt understand, so every single address that has city services, so Water Sewer
Right.
has a registered person to that address with a phone number.
Right.
So we do have that information. We do know who owns it.
Right.
We don't always know who lives in it.
Correct.
But many times, most of the owners prefer that the occupant pay the bill. So that is probably the higher percentage of what happens in rentals. So we have a number of the owner, and we also have a number of the occupant because the bill is going to them.
Right.
So we do know if the pipes break and it's winter, we do know that, and we do know how to contact people, and we have.
Good.
So I guess, I don't know if you knew that, but we do have that already in place. So that information is there. The trash can, not to get too digressed, we do require your trash cans to be moved off the sidewalk
Right.
after they've been picked up. We don't require that you put them in the backyard. You know, that's an individual property choice. But, so some of these things, I mean, we already have that information, already do that, but to try to inform every occupant of every house of city regulation, we wouldn't be doing that for rentals. We'd be doing that for every single residence in the city. That, I mean, that's realistic, because we don't know who's renting.
I'd be willing, I'd be willing to, well, I don't want to say bet you, but whatever, I'd be willing to risk a meeting with the owner to ask him if he would do that, or give him the website. When the tenant moves in, here's the website. These are the codes that apply to this subdivision. You're responsible for following these codes. There's, something as simple as that would just totally, totally resolve so many situations that can arise.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, I was just going to say, maybe one of the things we could do, Mayor and Council, is, so when hookup for service is requested for change from one property occupant to another property occupant, it all goes through a utility billing services.
Sure.
So whether or not additional information can be provided at that stage, whether it's website information, direction to certain things, I don't know what specific information is provided, but certainly if the desire is for us to look at that stage of just getting people information on the information you're talking about, what things they need to know, where to direct them to our website and others, certainly that's a process that we could have that conversation with utility billing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Thank you. Just thinking out loud, right, but, you know, I mean, certainly if city council noticed, it was brought before us a lot of data regarding issues, and we saw a common theme here, you know, that might make this different, but I'm, from where I'm sitting, I'm having a hard time because I feel like every person in their life is going to go through a period where they're renting. I don't know if it's fair to assume that renters are going to be causing a lot of issues. And what I'm curious about is whether communication can help solve your issue. I'm curious if it's possible to put Mr. Hunt in communication with the owners of the Burlingame subdivision. Maybe you guys could sit down, have a coffee, and get on the same page about their plan to operate this subdivision, and you could share the page of code that Mr. Nary has provided, and encourage them that that's a resource. I mean, is that something you would be open to doing?
I would be more than happy to do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say I agree with Councilmember Cavanagh that I wouldn't suggest that we, unless there really is a public safety concern, that this be something that the staff handles, perhaps with the exception of Mr. Nary's proposal. However, I would say, being in the real estate industry, if I might make a couple of suggestions to you to where you might make a dent in some of these issues. As you probably know, the state of Idaho does not regulate licensing for property managers. So there is not a consistent requirement for those property managers to provide any particular kind of service. Each property management company has a different service style. They provide different, okay, so this is part of our challenge here because there isn't consistency with what the property management companies are doing in relationship to the homeowner and the tenant. However, the HOA typically takes the perspective, and the city as well with code enforcement, the owner is responsible for everything the tenant does in that property. So the HOA would say, "Well, we gave the owner the information. The owner's supposed to give that information. Okay, so this is where we currently are, correct?"
Right.
If I might suggest, if you do, if you have the time and the interest to go on a bit of a campaign, the title companies carry a lot of information, a lot of accurate information about homeowners associations, who the appropriate person is to contact, who the HOAs are for certain homes and neighborhoods. They have, they're a wealth of information about that. Perhaps you put together a suggestion that you can send out to multiple homeowners associations to say, "In addition to providing the CCNRs to the owners when they come on board, those HOAs know that the tenant is now living there because they've got to go trade out their pool key, and they've got to go, you know, the tenant has to have some contact with the HOA." I also feel like another point at which we can create some improvement would be for you to request to the homeowners associations that they provide the you to request to the homeowners associations that they provide the CCNRs, not only to the tenant when the tenant takes occupancy, but also perhaps a copy of the city code. I think the HOAs probably would be more than willing to do that.
We'd do that.
Yeah, and I know that there are hundreds of property management companies, and I know that's a little bit of a needle in a haystack approach, but to create some consistency, it would make sense that the HOA is providing the CCNRs and the city code information at the same time to that tenant, and I realize that that sounds like a very perfect solution. But I think that's a quick way to get your process going faster than even we would be able to do at the city level, so.
As far as it goes inside Turnberry Crossing, when the tenant, when we get a new person moves in, I don't care if they bought the house or rented the house, somebody from our HOA goes over and gives them this letter, or one like it, this is an older letter here, and we give them a copy of the CCNRs. And that's when, if it's a renter, and they find out they can't get their boat in the garage, that's when all, you know, the hailstorm starts. But, if you can put me in contact with this developer, I'm sure that he would be more than willing to hand out, you know, the web address, if he's asked to do it. And I'll ask him to do it, because he can solve a whole bunch of issues and keep everything down. We welcome all the new neighbors, it's increasing everybody's property values, but let's make sure it keeps increasing the values. Let's don't let growth stifle growth here, right? The wrong kind of growth doesn't do anybody any good.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hunt, thank you for coming tonight and talking about an issue that you're concerned about, but I really want to thank you for bringing about a proposed solution. I mean, that's kind of nice. We deal with lots of problems always, and to have someone come up and say, "Hey, I think this might work," that helps, because it gets our creative juices flowing, and we can look at things. And have you moved this, those items you were talking about, certain areas of the code, because we don't want to give them the whole city code? You said there are certain items. Have you gotten those to legal or to code staff?
I've supplied the letter with what I was going to talk about tonight, and that's it.
I think it's worth having internal discussions about this. I think these types of communities, they're springing up all over the country.
They are.
And they're meeting a need, and millennials are less likely to own as opposed to rent. I mean, there's dynamics going on there we don't quite understand, but I think we probably need to discuss further with staff and possibly see if that's a solution that might work, and maybe, as Mr. Neri suggested, maybe we do it at this process, if that's workable. So, it's just something I think we ought to kind of look at internally a little more, and see what we can do. And my last question, just curious for your existing neighborhoods and your newsletter, do you do anything about mufflers? Do you say how loud they can be, and don't do that? Just curious.
As far as noise ordinance, we follow the city code in our particular subdivision, and all we have to do is get a complaint, and what we do is tell either the person to complain, or if we get multiple complaints, then the HOA takes it on, and they carry the complaint forward with the city, and, you know, get the guy a ticket. It's the same thing with barking dogs, you know? It gets to a point where, if there's that many people complaining, the HOA has to get involved. If it's just one guy complaining about one loud muffler, you know, that person has to go to the city and file a complaint.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Hunt, my sister, the same thing, it's a rental, and he decides to leave at 5:30 in the morning, every morning, and when it wakes me up in my bedroom, I think that's a little too loud. Same issues. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavan.
Mr. Hunt, one last thing. Thanks for being president of the homeowners association. I don't think there's any more thankless job in politics or government than serving on an HOA board, let alone to be the president, so I appreciate your service in that aspect. And just because it's been a topic this council has discussed in the past, wanted to let you know, right now, if you've got a renter in your neighborhood, and they're parking their boat in their driveway, that's a city code issue. You can call code enforcement, they'll go and handle that, whether it was an investor home neighborhood, or your neighborhood, or a non-HOA neighborhood, that act is currently prohibited in the city of Meridian.
All right, well, thank you, and I want to make it clear right now, I'm no longer the president of the HOA, but I can get more done not being the president. I can.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I was curious if it's possible, I don't know if it is, but if it's possible for the planning staff, if you think it makes sense to put him in touch with the owner of this, you know, Burlingame subdivision, perhaps they could work it out offline?
That was going to be my request, to have Sonya follow up with that information.
Agreed.
Is there anything further from council?
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you. If you could... Next up is item AA, public hearing for village apartments, age 2019, 0144. I'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. First application before you tonight is a request for a time extension on a conditional use permit. This site consists of 16.68 acres of land, its own CG, and is located at 2600 North Eagle Road. A conditional use permit for a multifamily development consisting of 336 dwelling units at a density of 29.5 units per acre was approved back in 2015. An administrative time extension was approved in 2017 for an additional two-year period of time in which to commence the approved use, which expired in December of last year. The subject request for time extension was received prior to that date, as required by the UDC. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for this site is mixed-use regional. The applicant is requesting council approval of an additional two-year time extension in order to commence the use approved with the conditional use permit. The reason for the request is to finalize the site configuration and building layout to improve circulation and pedestrian and vehicular connectivity as set forth in the comprehensive plan and the Unified Development Code. A subsequent modification to the conditional use permit for the reconfiguration is likely. The applicant's narrative states that they plan to commence the use as soon as possible. With all extensions, the decision-making body may require compliance with the current provisions of the UDC. While no significant amendments to the comprehensive plan or UDC have been adopted that would change the basis under which the conditional use was granted, access is an issue in this area for uses along State Highway 55 and Eagle Road. The UDC 11-3H-4B3 requires construction of a street generally paralleling the state highway to provide future connectivity and access to all properties fronting the state highway that lie between the applicant's property and the nearest section line road and/or Half Mile Collector Road for future connectivity and access. A temporary access via State Highway 55 and Eagle Road was granted to the property to the south, that's the Great Wall Restaurant, in 2008, and allowed to continue until such time as the properties to the south redevelop and driveway is constructed from the Great Wall property to East River Valley Street. And I'll just go back to this map right here. East River Valley Street is down here at the bottom of the screen. The applicant's property is this entire parcel right here. And then this was, the plan that I had up is the concept site plan that they had approved, and the building elevations for that development. So, at such time as that baggage road is extended to River Valley, the temporary access is required to be removed from Eagle Road, and all access is required to be provided via River Valley Street. Direct access via Eagle will be prohibited. No requirement to continue that baggage road to the north to the subject property was required at that time. Likewise, the subject property was not previously required to grant a cross-access easement or construct a vehicular crossing over the Finch Lateral at the southern boundary of this site, in order for the baggage road to continue. With removal of the Great Wall access, a baggage road will be crucial in this area for properties both north and south of the Finch Lateral. This is, this application relates to the, the application was before you last week, the Box Storage application. That was two parcels to the south of this application, just to orient you. Staff discussed this issue with the applicant's representative, and the applicant plans to construct a private baggage road on the subject property with a vehicular crossing over the Finch Lateral with development of the commercial portion of their site that fronts on State Highway 55 and Eagle Road. They also agreed to grant a cross-access easement to the property to the south, the Great Wall. To memorialize this proposal and ensure an access easement is granted and baggage road is constructed in the future, in accord with the UDC, staff recommends conditions of approval to that effect are added to the subject time extension with associated timing requirements prior to issuance of the first certificate of occupancy within the commercial portion of the development, as agreed upon by the applicant. Written testimony has been received from Stephanie Leonard, KM Engineering. She is the applicant's representative and is in agreement with the staff report. The staff recommendation is approval, and the proposed time extension would be until December 15th, 2021. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Okay, if not, we'll ask the applicant to come forward, please. If you could state your name and address for the record.
My name is Derek Goster, 74 East, 500 South, Suite 200, Battlefor Utah. So, I am one of the developers with GFI Meridian Investments. Just who we are, we're developers out of Utah. We have been coming to Meridian for a long time. A lot of our family lives here in Meridian. The last five years, we've spent a lot more time in Meridian with work. We have multiple projects we're working on in Meridian. The most time-intensive has been Chindon and Ten Mile, the Costco project, and an apartment project there as well, and tan-out parcels. But we are in agreement with the conditions that have been set forth by staff, and I can, will try and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavan.
Derek, thanks for being here. No real questions about the application, per se, but just maybe a comment for your own benefit. You know, I've lived in Meridian my whole life, I love this community, and I know you don't live here, we can still be friends, but obviously, this part of Meridian has been really appealing to you. It's a special part of our town. And so, I have a 12-year-old son, and at Christmas, he got some cooking classes, and so the cooking classes were at the village, so I try and avoid that place. My pocketbook appreciates it when I'm not there, but I found myself with a lot of time, and so I was driving around the area, and I noticed that there's a chunk of land that runs along your apartments, but the weeds are just crazy. And you look across the street, you've got this beautiful neighborhood, you've got this beautiful park, you've got this beautiful commercial, and then you've got just this kind of mess of weeds. And so, my hope is, this probably just hasn't been brought to your attention, and because I know you care about our community investing here, that we get a good commitment from you and your team that you'd get that addressed and cleaned up sooner rather than later.
Sure, council member, that, I'm not aware of the weeds, but we are committed to taking care of that. The land is actively being farmed. Were the weeds along Records or along Eagle?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavan.
The weeds that I saw were along Records.
Okay.
Pretty lengthy. And again, I don't think it's something that's intended, it just hasn't made somebody's list, and take the opportunity to put it on your radar, because I know you'll take good care of it.
We will look into that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I was going to echo the same comments as Councilman Cavan, but I wanted to say one thing, you guys have been good partners, and I wanted to say that, there's, we really appreciate it when developers and partners come in who listen. With my experience dealing with the Gosters, you guys have always listened, and I wanted to say thank you of the public record, that you guys are fantastic, and I hope that you'll continue to listen and be great stewards of your properties, and continue with the strong partnership with us here in Meridian, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Thank you. I was curious if you could tell us what a realistic timeline is for development of the property? If you, we're not holding you to it, right, you're getting an extension potentially today, but what do you anticipate in terms of the timeline?
Councilmember, so, we are actively working on site plans and building configurations. There's a lot of moving pieces with that. So, to give you, you know, a best guess, you know, like the staff report mentions, we are hoping to do it as soon as possible, but I don't know that I can provide sort of a best guess, other than we are actively working on it. Does that help a little bit?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Yeah, what I was curious about, the only public comments that we received were to the effect of, there's a specific type of weed that we have here, goat heads, are like really a pain for bike riders, et cetera. And I was just curious, I mean, if you could give us a sense of your commitment to clean that up, and when we might expect to actually get, you know, kind of a pedestrian route through your property, along with this timeline, you know, it would be great to hear that that's coming soon, and I was just curious if you could give us a feel for the timeline and when we might expect that that, those issues might be resolved, because right now, there's not a great, you know, pedestrian route through there.
Councilmember, with regards to the weeds, we will look into that immediately. Currently, we have a farmer who's been farming the land, and also, we thought been maintaining the weeds. It sounds like that's maybe not happened as good as it should, so we'll look into that immediately. With regards to the pedestrian walkway across the property, it's difficult to give an answer on that, because it just, it just depends on when, you know, other things fall into place on that. But we will look at the weeds immediately.
Are there any further questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so, Madam Clerk, were there any signups?
Mr. Mayor, no one signed in for this item.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience who would like to testify on this item? If you could come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Steve Bergstrom. My address is 4300 East Valley Park, East River Street. I live at the, in apartment K203, which is the apartment building adjacent to this parcel of land. I don't have any, I just recently moved in, believe it or not, from California. Sorry. I am going to be a homeowner, I currently am a homeowner in Caldwell, and I will be a homeowner in Eagle, probably within a year, so paying my property taxes properly. My only comment is, my wife and I didn't decide where we wanted to live when we first moved, and we love Meridian, probably will stay, and we probably will be homeowners in Meridian. My comment about this project is that, if you have traveled on North Records, we moved in in, I'm sorry, I'm kind of nervous, we moved in in April of last year, and it was kind of quiet. There wasn't a lot of traffic on Eagle, I mean, on North Records. Today, it's a raceway, morning, noon, and night. I think it's because most people are trying to avoid Eagle when they go to or from the freeway, so they take records. Now, you know, we only own one car, so we're not contributing dramatically to the traffic, but the people in the apartment complex that we live in have multiple cars, and I mean multiple. And I would imagine that a 336-unit building is going to make that pretty much impassable, because during the holiday season, being from California, from Southern California, I saw incredible traffic to the village, and it was all, it was not only Eagle, it was Records. Bumper to bumper, all the way down, past Ustick, all the way down, and then to the village, to the point where I wouldn't leave the property that way, I'd have to leave on East River Street. So, my comment to you, and, because I am definitely pro-development, and I want people to have homes, and I'm not anti-development or anything like that, my comment is, I live directly, I live, my apartment looks directly over that, over that plot of land, and it has changed in the last 10 months, nine months, 100% traffic increase, in my opinion. So, what's going to happen when 336 units appear there? And I feel sorry, not only for the people trying to get in and out, I feel sorry for the homeowners across the street of the complex I live in, because they didn't expect that, I'm sure, that that complex was going to be built there, and now I feel really bad for them, because now another complex is going to be going in, and really, really affecting their ability to get in and out of that neighborhood. to be going in and really, really affecting their ability to get in and out of that neighborhood. And that's my only comment. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
I, I do have one question. I was thinking about that when I was looking at this 336 dwelling units, and I cannot remember. Do you recall how many units were in that current, current facility?
Yeah, it's, it's, I believe it's about, about, almost identical. I think it's like 320.
300 and something.
Something like that. It's, it's the Regency apartment complex.
Okay.
And I think it's almost, almost the same number, maybe a little bit more going to be next door, but about the same number of units there.
Okay, thank you. And I couldn't remember, my son, when he was first married, they moved there and lived there. They really liked it.
Oh, it's a beautiful, beautiful place to live, and Meridian is one of the most beautiful cities I've ever seen. I really, really love Meridian.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, yeah, Mr. Bergstrom, I, I don't disagree with that. The only downside of that was when they decided to move, they were on the fourth floor, and that was no fun moving that stuff, but.
Yeah, we're on the second, so it's a lot easier.
Yeah, so appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to testify on this item? Would the applicant like to make any final words? Okay. Counsel, any discussion on this topic?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I move we close the public hearing on item H-2019-0144. Second.
I have a motion to second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Do you guys have it?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Appreciate the conversation with the applicant, willingness to take care of some of these issues that have been shared. I move that we approve item 8A, a time extension, H-2019-0144. Second.
I have a motion to second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Do we need to clarify, the motion is to, as presented in the staff report, do we need to clarify that staff recommends the conditions of approval to that effect, that section here that says that, that they put a timeline prior to the issuance of the C, the CFO within the commercial portion of the development that they, that they complete that baggage road? Do we need to clarify any of that, or is that, is it, because that's already in the staff report, got it covered? I don't, I don't know whether what Sonya has stated in this is also in the staff report, I guess is what I'm asking. Is that my question clear?
Mr. Neri.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Pearl, it is in the staff report, so the approval does cover all of that.
Okay, great, thank you. Just wanted to make sure we were.
Okay. Are there any further questions or conversation regarding the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Council Ms. Schrader.
Maybe just a little discussion, and just to give a feel for things. I, you know, I, I just think it's important for the applicant to understand that, you know, we are in the process potentially this year of taking a look at our standards for open space and some of the requirements for development, particularly with regard to multifamily development may be increasing or changing. We don't know yet how that's going to go, but we don't want to change the, the rules you've been operating under, and that's why I'm comfortable approving this extension of the time. But just wanted to give you a flavor for that, and I hope that you'll be sensitive as you're finalizing your development as to the traffic concerns in this area, because we have been hearing over and over about significant parking issues with multifamily developments, and it's certainly something that has been brought to our attention in several developments that don't have sufficient open space and that don't have sufficient onsite parking. So I just wanted to, to make sure that you're aware of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? If not, let's, the court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Hogland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All ayes, motion passes. All right, and next item up is, under ordinances, item 98, ordinance number nine, or ordinance number 20-1872. I'll ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number 20-1872, and ordinance H-2019-0111, Water Walk, for rezone of a tract of land situated in the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 8, Township 3 North, Range 1 East, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification from IL Light Industrial Zoning District to CG General Retail and Service Commercial Zoning District in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Seeing none, do I have a motion? Have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Miss Counsel.
I move we approve ordinance number 20-1872 with suspension rules. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, let's, the court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Hogland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All ayes, motion passes. Counsel, any items under 10A, future meeting topics? If not, do I have any final motion for the evening? Councilman Burnt.
Second.
I have motion to second to adjourn. Any discussion on the motion? If not, I'll